One for coming. Oh, they have new members. Uh, I am here, yes, and Rupert.
Yep.
Hope.
Yep.
T. Reikman.
Yes.
Lajo.
I'm here.
T. Reikman.
Here.
And then. Correct. Men. Can I give a moment to the agenda? Try to move it. Here. T. Reikman makes the motion, then give a second.
Hope.
Angie Hope. We'll call Hope as in yes, survival.
Yep.
T. Reikman.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Hope. T. Reikman.
Yes.
And Darius. And this over to, uh.
Okay.
Jerome.
Yeah, well, thanks board members for being here, staff, thank you very much for coming, Chris, all, uh, thanks for helping me get the agenda put together. And, uh, we don't have to be real formal, but we're, uh, being taped and, uh, if you're a team with it, I think it just turns over to you, Chris, or your team. And, uh, we would number six, all of you.
Uh, number one, first and foremost, I want to thank you guys, uh, we got a lot of things obviously to be thankful for, and you guys, number one, and it's been a while now, but the CDC program, the hearing during COVID with every person in the district, I, I thought it, we had a lot of positive comments, whether it was bus drivers or nurses or the teachers or the, you know, paras, everybody in there, so you guys took it in on that, which is really awesome and pretty cool. I think the business is more than anything, and we walked into a lot of our business over that two week time period prior to Christmas and giving them, you know, five hundred bucks when we were struggling, knowing that people were going to come in and spend more money there, they really appreciated it since it all stayed in-house and, uh, in the county, so that was, that was really cool. Um, uh, you know, we have positive news just with, you know, our numbers being good, you know, getting back now and getting everybody back, and so that's, that's good news too, so we're excited about being patient and maintaining the right steps and, you know, and, and doing half the right work, so we appreciate that. Um, our COVID transition days, you guys allowed us to have to get our, just to get our wits' bows, so I think for Rob, I really appreciate, um, those, as I know we all do, we're disciplined, we're chief distance, um, learning teachers for the K three early and then the four through six, when we saw that we had an issue, we're being flexible with that, so that's a lot of stuff in there in a short period of time, but we really appreciate that, so, so thank you very much for that. So, um, you know, we just have a, just a few items in there, uh, the first one is just, and Rick and I have talked a lot, uh, with this, um, later on, you guys are having your meeting, your three meetings for the calendar, and I guess, you know, number, the first one on there is just, um, just allowing us to be part of that discussion when it gets to fine details, I mean, you guys are going to get calendars tonight, the kind of show to start and end over the next three years, which I think for most of us, we're all, we're all bored anytime, we don't have to go into June, and, you know, I think, I can't speak to say a hundred percent, but I know I feel that way, that if we can get, finish it out at the tail end, and maybe I just know kids are ready, ready to be done, um, but that work that we do inside there, I know the administrators have been working on that calendar, um, right now, and it's getting, getting close, which is to, you know, maybe allow us a little liberty to take, take a look at that too and be involved in that conversation, um, that's really kind of the first, first item, so that's really just, um, asking for input, you know, where we know things work and where sometimes we struggle with stuff, so having that conversation.
So, Rob. Go ahead.
So with the, with the meetings that we're having, three meetings, that's just the start of the fourth week, right? And then we can have the other seven.
Right.
Yeah, because at the last meeting, the feedback was, we wanted to hear what you guys thought on that start, and we, I think for the most part, we heard some stuff from the public, but Angie's heard some things we had heard, other, we have heard a lot of hot events, but we, we wanted to make sure you guys were, your voice was heard of that, like you wanted for, for it to be, uh, moving in and sooner, so does it appear in us?
Yeah, yeah, it's not like we're, you know, two weeks before the end of August, usually the last week when we're starting meetings and that, it's just a matter of, you know, how do we set those up usually, I mean, ideally, if we get into fine detail, we can talk about, you know, how nice to have a couple forty weeks, you know, if we have Friday, Monday, you know, so we can, you know, like four days, and then have Friday, Monday, Labor Day, and then have four days, it's just a nice way to get the kids in a groove after being out all summer, to have a couple of forty weeks, and then have a five day week, just, and that's, that's the little stuff that, you know.
And I think we all feel that kids are going to learn more, but last week in August, and I mean, the first week in June, they're, they're excited to come back and get started versus, is June, what am I going to make?
I think some of the feedback, though, if I'm correctly going wrong, Angie, was that this is a three year deal, is what we're applying for, and by the third year, maybe that's where it finally is? So, so we don't know how soon that would end in August if we do it that way, so we, that was kind of our decision, that we would do, that we do a two year deal and then send it. I think our thoughts, though, were, we wanted your feedback before those three weeks, with those three meetings, before we made the decision on start.
Yes, and specifically, if you guys, if we come back for a week and forth, and that kind of, so it affects teachers more directly, also, cut your obvious enough versus, you know.
That's their year might be for your, that, right?
Yeah, and I think you looked at me by looking, I think at what, uh, the administrators were setting up, maybe, maybe that last year even, maybe not starting on Monday or Tuesday, maybe you start on Wednesday, so, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be workshops so early in there, but that, it's all stuff that we.
Yeah, we know why we did it last year, and we think next year's pretty similar problem, the third year, it's kind of labor.
Yeah, if you got, you got to buy it for three, and you put it, you got to put it for all three, so.
I don't think, I think we can.
So, what, what we did, what we did, though, is after the last hearing, we took that feedback that we got, and when you, uh, if you get a chance, you know, when we have our hearing, we're going to go through it tonight, but, uh, principals actually looked at this and they made an adjustment to what we had talked about in the third year. So if you decide to go forward with the third year, Chris is right out at the schedule, what I shared with him this afternoon, has us starting on a Tuesday, he'd start on a Wednesday of that week, so that, uh, we backed it off a little bit.
So essentially, what we're doing is starting before Labor Day.
Yeah. That'd be more sense, yeah. Yeah, I didn't mean to leave it, I was just saying, we wanted your guys to be able to, what we said.
For her people. Mm-hmm.
Uh, our second point, the second thing right now, we're starting to get everybody back, uh, in person, and, um, we didn't have to worry about it, you know, for a big chunk of, of the year, you know, our K three, we're all having their numbers, have always, we've always been pretty careful with their numbers, uh, four through six, you know, our class size is trying to be a little bit bigger, but right now, when we're coming back, we haven't had it yet, but, um, I know there's a lot of people sitting at this table, it's not going to be a dual for either this week or next week to have thirty-four kids, some classes are at their highest thirty-eight, um, in a class, and I, you know, for me, I've always, I've always been of the mentality of a, as a science guy, that, that my room is perfect at twenty-four, you know, and I think I used to coach, you know, when I coached, it was always, we always fifteen to one, you know, kind of our number, because we know what works as far as getting the kids, knowing that our, our mission statement is engage every kid every day, um, and if we're trying to do that with thirty-eight or thirty-four in a classroom, you're getting to less than a minute per kid, if you try to spend a minute with every kid, you get about a minute and a half with each kid every day, and that's it, in that situation, and that's, and that's not quality time, I mean, you're trying to manage thirty-four to thirty-eight, and so, when we, when we look at this, obviously, we're, we're beyond the point of no return right now as far as teaching staff, uh, but we know we have, like, a three or four year goal that we're going to have to do, because we see this big number in sixth grade, we see it in seventh grade, we see it in eighth grade, um, even some numbers as you go down, depending on what we get from Glacial Hills, um, if you look at the data all the way back to cave, uh, we got some, you know, we're, we're four for sure, and in some situations, we're going to be, we're going to need five, and I guess, more than anything, just as we move forward, um, I just want us to think about flexibility more than anything else, and just, you know, being flexible, knowing that we might need some of that, and, you know, a science department might need something like, um, we have classes that we haven't taught, uh, that we gave away to other departments because we were full with our, with our group, um, that we have now, that maybe if we take those back and we add a couple sections to reduce those big classes, that might be a hire, but, um, just, we, we have to be creative too, and how we do that, because we know we can't just hire five full-time teachers necessarily, um, but being flexible with that, I think, um, moving forward. Probably more importantly than anything right now, is what do we do with thirty-four in a class, knowing that we have a lot of high needs kids that are in those classes as well, um, and we're, we're really low on, on para numbers, when we prepare to look at paras, we are extremely low, kids that are supposed to have diabetic paras aren't getting paras, we're going to have five oh four kids that aren't on board, that we're looking at, that don't have those paras, and so that's something in the immediate future, and I know it's, 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 it's a problem trying to find paras, it's not easy to find paras, especially if you find good ones, but knowing that we're going to need this, you know, we're short this year, we're going to be short next year, so anybody we can get in the door this year and maybe commit to for next year, it's one less hire that we have to make, that we should make, uh, moving forward, so, um, look, that is something that, I mean, I guess, if there was anything that was going to cost something to our district, um, I'd like this, you know, somehow to be able to at least have the go ahead to try and find those people, and if they're available, if I are, um, you know, I, I can't, I don't know, I can't speak, Trevor, I mean, now, as far as you, you have special ed, how many of your kids that have, that have a para in their IEP, you don't necessarily have to get the P B.
It's not so much in, in the high school, I mean, there are a couple of kids that probably are receiving as many services as possible, but I know in like the six, seventeen period, they're, they're crazy short right now, um, and they've, they've all come back now, so, uh, yeah, it's, we have a lot of needs that are, you know, aren't meeting that at this point in time, so I'm going to call it a clip, so, and it's, it's frustrating.
Can I speak a little bit to that? That's fine. Um, we certainly are short right now, and we're covering up subs, and it's not ideal by any means, I have offered a job three times, um, and no one has accepted at this point, and so it's not for a lack of trying to find, we are currently within our legal, or legal pieces of what's on an IEP to be covered and making sure that that's happening, um, but we are certainly short about offering that position in a way, so it's not having a lot of, uh, people that are interested.
So, why do you, why do you think we're getting turned down? Do you think, is there any, is there a monetary factor that we're just not paying, paying enough to make more of a worthwhile job for them to come and help us out?
You know, our, um, we offer, at the highest that we can offer that right now is at thirteen twenty, and so it's certainly a piece that is concerning, I think there's also some things with the hours, so not everyone can handle making thirteen twenty an hour, plus, um, they don't work in June, July, or August, so when we hire, go to hiring right now in the fall, it's not such a big deal, because they're worried about June, July, or August, or September, but right now, when they're saying, okay, it's February, and you're going to hire me for three months or four months, what am I going to do after that?
I just, I guess, in my mind, I'm thinking, it's going to be a, a three month break for them, but we're going to need it next year, because our numbers aren't dying.
And they know that, but that's not.
They can afford a three month break.
Right, right, I, I know we've gotten creative where if we can't get subs, we pad out the annual a little bit and, and jack up our sub price, otherwise we just don't have subs to cover classes, so, I don't know, that would be something that would be helpful, if, if not getting the people in the door, we know we need the people, but we're just not getting them in the door, there's something wrong with that equation.
There is a new dynamic, new dynamic has, has occurred with hiring people since COVID last spring, and that, I will point a hundred percent to how the unemployment is. It's not unemployment like you remember, it's unemployment plus, so if you were at whatever level, it's plus, so you're always, you're always short as the employer, um, I can point to dental hygienists that didn't want to come back last spring because it was unemployment plus, so they actually would go down in wage by going back to their work. Um, I shared with some of the board members, our, well, everybody's unemployment insurance gets, uh, looked at in, uh, December, the rates get set, you know, from the prior year, how many unemployments you have, they didn't even do it this year, and, uh, I think it took a picture of it, but the gist of it is, in the state of Minnesota, they typically have a hundred thousand, uh, applicants in a year, they have about a million this year. So I think this, this dynamic of how, um.
He has that federal figure too, which is.
It, it's just chasing its tail, and I mean, it, it's, it's not, um, the typical jobs that you would think of that are only seeing the problem, it's like everything, and then, for that matter, um, we had a guy that was working for us, that decided to go to a different business mechanic, and, uh, the reason why he went is because, you know, the hours, he, he wanted more family life, which is perfectly fine, the thing I have a problem with is if he would leave our operation, take a job from Angie, but then, when COVID rolls around, he doesn't feel safe working for Angie, so he can fly. So now, he's back on us because he left us because it was a better opportunity with Angie, see what I mean? It just, and the whole reason why he is not working as a mechanic is because he doesn't feel safe because of COVID, that's fine, I mean, whatever, but the point being is, how does that get fit? Unfortunately, nobody in this room is going to be able to do that, and just throwing more money at individuals, that's not the solution in this case, I'm afraid, so I don't know when that changes, but I think that the ramifications of that issue are huge moving forward to us as a society, but that's, uh, it's, it's a huge problem for more than just the school system, on how to find individuals, and if somebody, I have a few fixes, but, um, if anybody wants to get political and start throwing some policies around, I'm afraid that's the only way, you know what I mean? Unfortunately, but.
I think that, uh, you should know that we have positions posted, and we need to get an application today, and it's quite a celebratory thing when we get an application, because everybody in the office knows it, and they try to let the principals know as soon as possible, so they can get somebody here. I think that what Ted is saying is, is happening not in our business, but across the board with that distance center where our, uh, but we're being aggressive, um, I don't know that, just, just like with, uh, teaching staff, I don't know that we have the new lateral authority, we're just saying, we're going to increase the cost of a employee, because we have union contracts in that area also, so it's, we, we recognize a problem, and we're not sitting back saying we don't hire somebody, um. You told me today, we have three, three positions that we should be trying to fill?
And one, yes, we have, one student is leaving, so I think we have two positions that, which have an effort, and then a potential medical.
So we, we.
That's not calling win.
That's not calling win or the elementary.
I think Dorothy will give that, those jobs, we always, every year, I mean, every year, like, we're always asking the nets, and we catch a fish that's a peeper, and it's, it's, it's not. It's hard, it's harder to get them, it's hard to keep them, and.
Certain over our, our turnover. We all.
Yeah, and, and normally, in a, in a, in a twenty-four person classroom, it's not as big a deal, because when we get to those kids, when it's, when it's thirty-four, it's a completely different dynamic, I have the biggest room in the, in the entire.
Well, I'm not saying.
And I tapped out at the.
I'm just saying.
I had three looking down Monday, you know, so, um, and I, and I just know there's going to be kids that aren't going to get what they need, and it's just purely, it's just big numbers, and sadly, we can't do anything about making more, I mean, I can't call myself, uh, you know, so that's, that's just where it is, the aggressiveness, or anything we can do, you know, where we can give those kids what really need the help.
Free design C three.
There's way, there's ways, if you. Christopher technology, that's going to be a hell of a lot more out of your budget than they're giving, fifty hundred bucks a year. So.
I think forty could, no?
Something true. Uh.
Okay.
So that's, that was, that was three, uh, Mary, I might turn number four over to you, I mean, I, I feel this way too, but, uh, just as we move forward along with those staffing concerns, we are greatly short on counselors, I mean, I know Rick and I have had conversations or whatever, and what the same number of kids that we have that he's had, you know, we probably have, you know, this three to one ratio of, of as far as counseling staff, and, and we have kids that need, we got some serious, kids with serious issues that need, need some extra help, and whether it's mental health practitioners, or whether it's counselors, and just the organization that, that takes, um, you know, it's not just, not just more teachers that are going to help us, allow us to run a little bit better, so.
Sure, I, um, so, well, Rick and I have talked about this a little bit too, but there's three of us basically in the whole district, um, I'm the only social worker, and then, um, we have two counselors, it's always been a little bit of a struggle to serve everyone's needs, but what we're missing really is that tier one, the, the school-wide, um, help, you know, going to classrooms and teaching kids the tools they need, so they don't get to the critical point where Britt and I are, and John is running around pretty on fires with kids that maybe if we could have laid a foundation of goods, you know, coping skills and, and management, you know, and self-regulation, and all those things, they wouldn't be at those points, where now they're not, probably not going to graduate, and we're, you know, we don't really have much, um, we're starting, but we, you know, our intervention, um, for academic things isn't strong yet, and, and kids just aren't, they're not supported the way they, they should be, or they need to be, and we're losing, you know, kids that leave our district are leaving not because of, you know, things like people think, but we're not in college classes, it's because they, they're struggling, they're failing, they're, they don't feel supported, I can look at the list of kids that leave, and I can tell you, they're, that's why they're leaving, and, um, we just need to do a better job of that, it's, it's not, it's just not okay, and it's worse, and today was just a banner day for, you know, almost coincidentally, we were having this meeting tonight, and it was just so revolving, kids are falling apart, we're, we just lost two more today that are leaving, you know, doing online, you know, things that we just can't, aren't supporting, um, aren't able to support them because of not enough people, that's just simply what it is, there's three of us for thirteen hundred students, and in my time is tied directly with special ed, I mean, I can do some, but I have to do, you know, I don't know, seventy percent or something special ed, um, so I, I serve all those, those students, and then with the paras, for instance, too, you know, trying to help out a little bit that way, and it's, it's just gotten, um, kind of awful.
So the, these students that are leaving, are they, just to get us a better understanding, what, you know, what you're typically seeing, are they, are we talking about, are these typically, uh, special needs type of kids to begin with that you're working with, or just generally speaking, are we leaving, these kids that are leaving, um, because it's too hard, or it's not, not working out, or they came back to school, or if you just expand a little more on that, and what you're talking about, as far as, you know, just not, to not get the support, what kind, are you talking about, you, one-on-one, or therapy, or, or, or?
No, that's.
Like the whole support that's keeping them, or more teachers, one-on-one support that's giving them to, you know, stay confident, or if they're doing it, just want to stay here.
Right, right. Um, it's basically those more at risk, they don't maybe qualify for specialized, or specialized does, and we have a great specialized department, um, regardless of not having enough paras, um, they work really, really, really hard with those kids, and they, so that, those kids, I think, I mean, there are some that still struggle, obviously, because of, um, just their needs, but it's that more at-risk group, or middle group that they don't follow, they don't qualify for specialized, they're, they're kind of maybe the ones you think of as just kind of all through cracks, or they're lost, maybe withdrawn, quiet, they're not the kids, you know, maybe have behavior, some of them are, it's just, we don't have, it's just stuff, well, well, frankly, um, we used to, we had a really, really, really strong, um, alternative program, you know, for kids who couldn't really learn in the traditional setting, or were failing, or have failed, and we had a, an, uh, alternative program that was actually held in Starbucks when the day treatment started, the ALC was in the basement, and the treatment was upstairs, and that was great, and then it, it, you know, kind of pared down to just being in our building, we had the wing, um, G one forty-five down here with a CNA class, that was all our alternative program, so kids that were struggling, needed more one-on-one, uh, maybe had failed classes, they, they spent their time in that classroom with a couple different teachers, and there was more mental health support, we had, we're right now, and probably are at all kinds of low with mental health support, um, in the district, that I can, you know, at the most, we pick five, I think, you know, social workers and counselors, but so we, we moved from that model, then just to a classroom with one teacher helping those kids, and now we don't have that at all, we have the online program that does not work for ninety percent of the kids, they need a human being sitting with them, helping them, encouraging them, um, and, you know, frankly, I'm not really sure why we don't have that anymore, I mean, I'm sure it's down to money, but, you know, we never hear that, I mean, from anyone, not just the board, but teachers, or parents, or anyone, when you talk about adding college classes, that's never an issue, and I, I love, my kids took college classes, that's awesome, but there's never, you know, like, oh, that's too much money, but when it comes to that alternative program, or those kinds of things, it's, those kids deserve, they deserve to have what they need too, and they need sometimes a one-on-one or a smaller setting, and we just frankly don't provide that for them, and like I said, I can look at that list of kids every year that leave, and that, that is a large group for them, that we just can't save, we can't hang on to them, because we don't have people to do it, and, um, the structure for them.
I think, I think the benefit of those people, you know, health announcers have, decompress issues that, that escalate, and, you know, we don't have an SRO, we don't have these students even right now, I mean, so those guys are running like crazy right now, if there's issues, when it, the roof hits a van, um, you know, we don't have a lot of options, and, um, um, and that's where I think a lot of those probably get to a point that they don't need to get to, but we don't have the people in place to take care of those kids, when they need a place just to go, then they, they can go to a room, and they're just going to, you know, internalize it, and that's just the key, so.
Like, we've, a kid today that, that during Laker time was having an issue, Britt and I both have Laker, we have vice, so we're in our room with our kids, and it's, so this kid, you know, leaves the room, and there's no, you know, where's she going, and the teacher is like, do I leave my class of seventeens and praise that to her, and she had nowhere to go, and then she texts her mom, well, Mary and Britt don't have time to see me, you know, exactly, so it comes back, and so then all the moms mad at us because we didn't have time to her child's needs, it's like, I can't leave my seventeens, Britt can't leave, and I didn't even know this was going on, but, um, you know, it's just, so it's those high needs, and it's also that tier one, going to classrooms, giving those kids those tools they need to be able to function and, and deal with their mental health, or their environmental issues at home, or wherever, or, you know, in the community, um, it's kind of bold that we need to beef up, in my opinion, and I just, I don't know, during the, I mean, I've been here twenty-nine years, and it's, it's tough, and this year is tough for everybody, and I'm not trying to complain or whine or anything, it just, um, you know, it's.
I, I just think this might be an opportunity, just knowing where we're at this year with the kids coming back, with everything going on, knowing that we need, this is another one of those positions we need to fill, so if we open it now, and somebody's willing to come and walk in the door and take over some of those duties for, for counseling and mental health, and we need them next year anyways, why not get them out, I mean, we're, I was just, this is not my agenda, or list or whatever, I just said, we also have to be kind of aware that we got, we got some stellers that are retiring at the elementary, and we got some people that have been monuments in education that are leaving, and we got to think early and often about getting into that pool of teachers to replace them, because there's some big shoes to fill, and some of those people are a little bit losing, and I think that can start, you know, I don't think that has to start, I mean, I think we, you know, we can try to lock some of that stuff down as soon as possible, just to make this better for next year, uh, looking forward, if there's something we can do to really be able to, that this year would be ideal, and just transition, so.
I think, um, Mary, too, you mentioned twenty-nine years, would, would you say that in your time, that those needs, whether our, our enrollment has done this or that over those twenty-nine years, but the general needs that we are discussing have continually done this?
Yeah, for sure, I mean, social media or internet, whatever.
Well, I, I'm guilty as anybody, but I think I take for granted the way that I was brought up, and we all maybe do at some point or another, that I was taught certain things, not anywhere on this side of a school wall, that I take for granted, and a lot of our students, they don't get, and, and this is where a lot of that comes in.
Yeah.
Thinking back on that, recognizing that this has probably always been an unreserved part in your twenty-nine years, because are, are we lower in staff numbers now than we have been, or is it the same, or is it easier for, just, I don't know.
Um, yeah, much, well, not much, like I said, we never, at our, at our most, we have, um, three social workers and two counselors.
Okay.
At the high.
So.
We kind of social worker, not very long ago, on that condition, we never filled with a. Right.
Yeah, that's kind of.
Yeah.
So school board, um, Mary, and I had had a chance to talk, or had a chance to, uh, visit with Britt, actually, um, principals were part of this, and Mr. Weaver, and, uh, I think there's some things that have happened, um, over. And I think there are some things that have happened over time that has accentuated our situation, even though we have three people. We're doing some things that we, we wouldn't do if we would have seen all this coming. And one of them is, as an example, Mary's a full-time social worker, but we, we pay for her with special education funds. And what that does is me and Mary, you correct me if I'm wrong, but that means Mary legally is supposed to work with about eighteen kids. Now, we get it great because that's how we hired her and that's how, you know, we get some help to spend that, but we restrict other kids that she could work with. With Britt and Rose, we have a full-time counselor who is a point four teacher. She teaches two classes, who's, is it seventh and eighth or?
Eighth grade or whatever.
Okay, eighth graders. And it's very good classes and Britt's a wonderful person, well-tempered. But that occupies her forty percent of the time. You think about that from, so we have one full-time counselor who's tied up teaching a few kids in the eighth grade. We have Mary who's tied up with eighteen students because she can only work with IP even though she cheats probably.
It's like eight, I've never had a case load that small.
Yeah, I thought you told me you, you have eighteen kids in.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Well, that makes me feel better. But here's the deal, if I'm a kid that has an IP, I can go see her. If I'm a kid that does not have an IP, I'm not, she's not supposed to serve you, she might. But those are the rules because we get two-thirds of her funding through special education. And then when we make a decision like allowing Britt, and I, I know that she's wonderful and she does, but we allow her to tie up her time with two classes when we have umpteen classes, making full grades. We, we have one counselor in, in this building, basically, and Mr. Weaver has, goes back and forth.
And he does mostly special ed, so.
Yeah. And so what, the reason we had these conversations is so we could try to draw a V on what are we doing and what, what could we or should we be doing as we prepare for next year. In addition, we are supposed to get some new peers, you know, for that one, the, you know, the academic work. But as soon as we get interpretation of what that could be used for, it would be possible, I, I think we're gonna get like a half million dollars or in that percentage. Some of that, we've been told is possibly able to be used for mental health or for the needs of kids that are coming back in that haven't been here since last March, when they went home. And so I think there could be some help kind of along the way. But in my dialogue with Mary and Britt and whoever we met with, I think that, and I share with you that the counseling slash social work area is an area that we need to address for next year. Now, maybe that's too late, but it's on our agenda to say, what should we be doing and how can we properly staff them. And then just, this is mostly from a personal experience. I think that we have some unbelievable opportunities for career and technical education in this area. And we're surrounded by folks that I think would be very interested in internships and that kind of stuff with their older kids. And so my experience is we, we might have a career tech kind of counselor who can work with not only kids, but with adults who come in, need some retraining or whatever, and to give some guidance that our kids aren't getting right now. And that would be along those lines of career and technical education. And what are some careers that they could be doing internships in right here going forward? So the administration is talking about this area and as long as everybody's here, another area would be early childhood. And what we're doing in that area in terms of how do I be planning for next year? But we don't have anything in paper. We just had a conversation a couple of weeks ago.
Right, yeah.
I think, you know, it's running together.
I know.
But we know the need and I think that when we get all of our kids back, I just want to say on behalf of, I think, the, probably all of us, we have kids that are gonna be coming back into school that haven't been in school full-time for almost a year. And there's awareness that we have that that might not be, they might not walk in the same way they walk out last March. And how are we going to interact with that? Is, is, so, I just want you to know that we took those meetings very seriously and we're having dialogue on, well, what would be proper and what do we need to do with the people we have here already to free them up? So it can be more effective.
Yeah, a lot of these kids, uh, teachers, three-quarters of the year to keep them socially and mentally stable. And when they, we, we take that COVID takes them to school, it's gonna be that much harder work for you guys.
Yeah.
They're, it's the kid that you wouldn't think about, shouldn't have the problem, a lot of our problems.
And we don't like to hear that, that we might be losing anybody because if we lost five kids and eight thousand dollars a student, that's a lot of money.
Are they long-term, are they long-term families that kids are losing? Or are they kind of kids that we see kind of like come and go or mixture of both or?
Kind of a mixture, but probably more champions families or more, but, you know, not long, yeah, not really here yet.
Just curious.
Yeah.
And you have to lose them out of the district or are they going to district side or whatever district?
No, just like either going there to have to go to Greenstone to get credits or going online. Um, but not, like we're.
Through our own program?
Yeah.
And do we still have a certain percentage of kids after the materials, if we're going through our program? Do we mark that number as dependent by?
No, no.
They were all with this, it's all a choice.
From, I just got the numbers. It's, it's from seventh grade to twelve, it's like six, seven, four, five, seven. There's no double-digit number.
Okay.
Very similar, but very much less than ten percent, maybe five percent of our classes are now.
Trick let back in, which is kind of one of the bad ones. But I mean, I give you a class.
Oh, no, it's worse than that.
And you all come back.
Yeah, that's right.
We, we, I, I personally think we'll see a little kick out after they've been in school for three weeks. And they're like, oh, I remember this. I remember sleeping in in the morning and, you know, checking in, uh, that they, you know, that, that might be a little bit of an issue. We just got prepared for it. So we're using a little bit of that. I, I just, I mean, because we can't stop them. So all of a sudden, things aren't going great and they're like, they're tired of getting up in the morning. Yeah, just do their thing. Not that that's necessarily gonna allow, but they're gonna want to do it.
I think, Mary, though, your, your point is well taken and we're.
We've, we've, we're, we're not at this to the point of going from five to three, but we'll try to get back to going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Wasn't our fault.
No.
But we're here now.
Yeah.
It's our fault.
It's our fault for next year.
Thanks, Joe.
Mm-hmm. And then our last, our last one is just kind of more, more than anything, just to get the okay from you guys to if we wanna start having a conversation about negotiations as we get, we really don't wanna deal with it during this school year. It's crazy, but if we start to look into something, you know, early part of the summer and get it done before we start next year, it's just so nice to not have to deal with that and have one extra stressor has a possibility to have that conversation, you know. And then, you know, in the only, in, in the near future, I mean, you know, we've had conversations like because the cares days are gone, we're kind of in a flex point with, you know, we have young teachers, maybe teachers that have had, had kids and they're in their second age, leave and we, if we do get a resurgence for some reason or we have somebody that gets sick, just knowing that we have the conversation, we're hopefully gonna take care of them because there isn't, there isn't ten COVID days out there yet. Maybe it will come with that. I don't know if it will. I haven't really heard anything about it coming back. But just, you know, trying to take care of our people so that, you know, they're not losing, losing money for sick teachers and all that. Um, things like that. And I know too, we're talking a little bit about mentoring programs and stuff. And that's not necessarily contractual, but.
Well, you can go ahead and share, if you want to just talk about this.
Yeah, just, just a need, just for, you know, we got a lot of young teachers, like I said, we're gonna have three elementary teachers next year at least, you know, if we're hiring anything and just always looking to try to supplement our mentoring program to, you know, help kids through. You know, we do, we mentor, but it's not really a mentoring program. You know, we have some people that are already in place that are really fired up about doing something like that as a possibility. So just, you know, we're more of that down the line. It's something that we need and it's something that I think we really get a lot of young teachers on. Just to, you know, some of the calls that fall in your, in your least respective, when they do happen, getting them through that.
Just to piggyback on that, the board, we just had a conversation with Montague or wherever we met this week. But we have had a conversation about the need to develop a mentorship program for especially newer staff that is, is very focused. Instead of kind of sophist or Wade or somebody, take somebody under their wing, the best membership program, best practices, kind of rigorous thing that you do with new people that come in. Training and orientation, building of the culture, letting them know, what do we do when a kid asks me out? What do we do when a, when a student is disruptive? Or what do I, where do, where do I, how, how do I get paid around here? Do I use my, my match? I mean, some stuff that are very holistic, but would cause people that we've selected to be hired to set up this district, you know, they really care about me. And while we do care about it by having a mentorship program, it just makes it much more evident. So talked a little bit about maybe trying to create that. First part of the conversation was, well, let's get that ready for next year. And then we had a little more conversation, well, we're only halfway through this year. And if we're bleeding a little bit, why, why don't we try to take care of that now? So you might be hearing a proposal on us trying to get a mentorship program up pretty soon that might cause some of our people who are thinking, is this how it is all over? Which I think it is right now with COVID. But how can we help it is the, the point. And so it'd be good for you guys to know that, you know, might be part of the discussion going forward. And going on to that.
I usually file and take the negotiations in February, beginning of March, so we get that one. This is kind of what I file.
What should I do with that?
You can give him some suggestions.
Oh, I got you. And we'll, we'll kind of be expecting that.
Hey, yeah.
I, I've been, just to follow up on Chris's comments, there was not a greater feeling for professional staff than to be able to be done and knowing coming in in the next year, here's, here's what my compensation is. And so if that's something that people want and we can figure out a way to do that, we're gonna talk about this and into personnel committee later. But there's a, there's a really positive energy that exists in the absence of people starting through the year and kind of, well, we need it this time. When are we gonna find out what my compensation is for this year? So I think that there's interest in trying to make that happen sooner or later, if you can.
You might, I don't, can't recall the last time we started the year or anything, but.
I, I agree that it doesn't make much, it doesn't make much sense to do much before the legislature gets done. But once it gets done and we know what they've done, which is usually probably a player, there's no reason, I mean, we do it back in the negotiations session, there's probably not much conversation that existed toward the end that didn't play a place in the beginning. And, you know, that's where it brings heart and heavy, and it can be something. And you guys know, we have a, we have a long night in front of us, but the, the board's got a workshop on, one of the workshops tonight is with MSBA negotiations and the process and so we're doing some training. Anything else you need? If you want to take chat and take this news with your wife. So the next one has to be with concerns about the contract. And, you know, we, we all come from different places, but in my experience, a contract is really healthy when it's about what we're doing and there's an understanding that the district's all about getting better. And this, this issue is something we've talked about from an administrative standpoint, that the current contract we have in place, which is negotiated over many, many years, can be restrictive. It can always be suffocating when we're looking at, are there some things that we could do that would improve the education program for our kids? So example might be, you guys have talked about the development of our element or about middle school. And Sarah's, you know, as a middle school principal, is pretty intent on working with staff to say, how do we go about developing a middle school that's really a cut home? Because we just don't wanna change the name. We want it to be more adaptable to the developmental age of kids that they're working with. And, you know, and I got a chance to do that once, so I can speak from experience. But what's the best kind of thing that can happen is they go out and then look at some other sites. You know, they benchmark against other places that are considered top-notch. Wade and I were talking about this the other day, we talked about Metta Taka. You know, we're not Metta Taka's size, but there are some ideas that they would have that really might be attractive here. Because they're so much bigger. They have money to spend on research and whatever to find out what are the best ways. And then there are some schools up around that falls about the same size, but maybe they gotta run for the two each way. But what I've been encouraging Sarah to do, and Chris and I have talked about this a little bit, we talked about this in the week before the other day, is that they would go out and develop as a team and with the community some ideas that we wanna do as a middle school that might be totally different from any kind of language we have in the contract. It might come back, usually it's about schedule, right? So it might come back and it's a hive project, well, we do this for a block and we do this for forty-five minutes, we do this for eighteen minutes. And, I mean, that would be the best kind of situation, right? We're not restricted by anything. And what we've talked about, the reason we have this on there is, I'd like her to be able to do that for, and then come back and then negotiate some terms around and whatever that was. Because really the, the language in the contract deals primarily with prep time. To make sure that the statute, and it's a statute that's followed, it says, based on the number of teaching minutes, there are expectations for duty-free lunch and prep, and the teacher prep time that's directly related to their teaching. So the reason we have this on here is we like to be able to have that team who's gonna develop the middle school have kind of a green light to go out there and bring back the best ideas possible and put them together in a collaborative kind of way. And then we've talked to the associations, well, what, what kind of language do we need to make that happen? As long as we're always in compliance with the law and the statute. So we don't wanna do that in secret. We want there to be an awareness that if we can do that, that would give us the best chance of testing. But that might require some even different methods. So if you don't want, if you don't want to put it in the contract right away, maybe we can call it memorandum of understanding or, and it's some kind of agreement that gets us through a year or two and we get to try something out before it's finalized. And maybe that's how you've done things in the past, but with looking at doing this, I wanna be able to speak with confidence. That's what we would go about trying to do and that would be how we would figure it out. So, so we develop language that fits the school we have instead of developing a school that fits our language. And there's a big difference. I don't know if there's any questions. Chris and I talked about that just briefly, but the administration's talking about that because of Sarah and her B O T are having dialogues about where to go and revisit and what to do to bring that up. I don't know if there's any questions. The other thing is just kind of a, mostly a compliment, I guess, and that is that I have really appreciated working with Chris and trying to develop an atmosphere or a culture that isn't about wins and losses. It's not about competition. It's about just getting things done. And in the end, if we separate rank, we're all here for one reason and that's to serve our kids. And if we didn't have any kids, not one of us would be here. So if we think of it like that, as we're going forward, um, I just want the board to know that, that, uh, we have really appreciated being able to go down and talk about some ideas, they don't have to be our ideas, we just want them to be good ideas. And we want to move, have a way from a competitive environment where you have the wins and you have the losses and move together where we just get things done. And if we don't care whose ideas they are, we can get a lot more done, you know, if that's important. And we had a nice meeting, control meeting the other day, it doesn't mean it's not spirit. I mean, and I mean that in a healthy way, but I love it when we close the doors and argue like crazy, but we have trust in each other that we're all here to come up with the best ideas. And, uh, so I don't know if you have any comment on that, but I just want the board to know that we're, we're about moving in that direction. And away from, um, you know, uh, the struggle, we'll still have the struggle, but we'll all be having it together. And all these things that you guys have brought out tonight and turned, what you brought up are all the things people solve, we all be happier than heck. But we went to your house and got them solved, we were serving kids there. So I think it's just more of a statement on that part. I don't know if, uh, Leo or, uh, Sarah or Nate have any questions, but we've been talking administratively about how do we, how do we get there? And, uh, Chris and I have had some dialogue about that, we had some dialogue about that, we were meeting for, just with the principal or with the administration and the staff. So I think I said all these things must stop. That's, that's.
Bottom line is we're all on the same team, all the same goal, make sure we don't forget that. Definitely not, so we think that's us and you are in order of them and us, that's the thing that we're all here for.
I am kind of upset that Wade put me at the bottom of the list for getting a call from him. And I should tell you too, the first day I was, the first day I was here, I asked him, where's this environmental center that you got here? He said, hey, get on my, uh, four wheeler and I'll take you around. And so we went all the way around, got to the far end. He said, no, I got a couple of requests and we get to.
Is that the, the actual woodshed?
I think, unless you guys have anything, uh.
I just want to say thank you. I don't have the chance to see you guys that often. It's been a difficult year, we definitely recognize it. That goes for you five as well. Really appreciate it.
Everybody does stuff outside of their comfort home, us included, you included, kids, everybody's, it's not in the, we're dealing through with the best of them. I think we're doing a way better job than the rest of the district. I know we are, I know we are, the rest of the district and, uh.
That's because you can.
Mm-hmm. Because of the support staff, staff, you know, you know, communication, you need, you need my business. We communicate with each other, shit will figure out. It's not what we do, but everybody gets their voice heard and sometimes, uh, sometimes, well, this guy in the pool has the best ideas and he's listening to them, you know. Just to piggyback off of that too, like three hundred percent with Chad, this is the second meeting confer that I've ever been a part of and I'm not as, that's right, as some of, of our teachers in here. But this, to me, when, the other one was at a previous district, but everybody I think goes into these like, oh my God, what's gonna, what's gonna happen, what's gonna happen? This is so good for us, I mean, as an entire district, we should have these as regular as, as we need to, you know, just to, just to have that communication, you know? Cause it is, as I said, and Rick had on it too, but it's, we're all on the same team here. I mean, we're, we're all doing everything we can to support the, the twelve hundred and eighty kids that come to our door.
And we don't know what we don't know.
Right, and vice versa, absolutely, you know?
Like you just assume you're gonna spend money on mental health, well, if we don't know, we need to, right? You know, and, and if we communicate it, now we all know we're on the same age, we know the need. We may not agree with the need, but at least we know what your, your doctor needs and you guys are professionals, so take that anticipation and, and then of course we have a budget to maintain and, uh, we work within that, but we may re-privatize that in front of something else and make it work. And we don't know what we don't know, so. When Mary and I first met, she said, I don't want you to take this personal, but the mental health needs in this district have really gone up since you got here.
Direct, direct correlation. It wasn't, it wasn't COVID, it was.
Thank you very much, you guys.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I know you guys have a long day, so appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Don't, and to Mr. Zavala, one second.
He right now.
And you, Arsmen, yes, Zavala. Yes, T. Reitman.
Yes.
Hoosberg.
Yep.
Hooper.
Yep.
T. Reitman.
Yes.
And Barry. On to the next. Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
We're here, we're here, yeah, we're here each other's six for the flexible, very, very.